A quorum of at least 100 people being present, 100 voters being present. Sherburne's first special town meeting of October 24th, 2016 will now come to order. Town Clerk Carol Marple has confirmed that the warrant has been properly posted by the town constables and that the tellers for today's meeting have been sworn in. As usual, I'll begin with a few housekeeping reminders. First of all, if you have to leave the room for any reason, you must exit only by the back door on this side. You must leave your ballot with a check-in official at the rear door. And if you plan to return, ask for a pass to reclaim your ballot when you re-enter the room. And this applies to everyone. Second, please set your cellphones on courtesy mode, and if you must take a call, please leave the room. Third, there are assisted-hearing devices available. You should check with Pat Cassell, who is in the rear in the cross, in the transverse aisle if you need some. Four, please do not sit or stand in the aisles, especially the aisles that are in the rear up to the balcony. And fifth, we always welcome non-voters at our town meeting. You should have been given a name tag to wear, but you must sit in the non-voter section, which I believe is to my right in the rear of the balcony. First, I'll introduce the people on the stage. To your left is the advisory committee, beginning with Chairperson George Marl, then Vice Chair Vicky Relis, Susan Aharonian, Barb Kantorski, Steve Leahy, Russ Pollak, Jeff Waldron, Ben Williams, and Mary Wolfe. Next to me are Town Council Barbara San Andre and Town Clerk Carol Marple. Then there are your selectmen, Paul Durensis, Chairperson Mike Jaimo, Chuck Yon, Mark Brandon, and Sean Colleen. I'll explain our procedures. I do this every year, but, and sometimes if you know what's going on, it may be a little boring, but I wish you would please pay attention, and then you'll know how tonight's business is going to be conducted. Their parliamentary procedures are the rules of the road that allow groups of people to conduct meetings in a fair, orderly, and predictable way. They protect the right of the minority to be heard, and at the same time, they allow the majority to go forward and complete the group's business. This protects us from a disaster. The procedures of a town meeting are different from what you may know from a fraternal organization or a club, because a town meeting is a deliberative legislative body that exists only to complete its agenda. Our Sherburne Town Meeting procedures reflect state statute, our Sherburne local bylaws, best practices of the Massachusetts Moderators Association, and our local town traditions. A quick review. The agenda for tonight's meeting is called "The Warrant." A copy was mailed to every household. You received it. It's embedded in the advisory committee report. And if you forgot your copy, try and share with the neighbors. Sometimes there are extras available in the rear. There are, yes. Secondly, a motion must be made to put an agenda item before the meeting. I will recognize a member of the advisory committee to make the initiating main motions. To speak on a motion, you must ask the moderator, that's me, to be recognized. To save time, I ask that you already stand at one of the microphones. There's one down in front, there's one in the cross aisle in the back, before asking to be recognized. Once you are recognized, please state your name and your address, and then make your comment. Your comment must be relevant to the motion. The traditional phrase is "within the four corners of the motion," and it is limited to two minutes. I will not recognize the speaker a second time, if at all, unless all others who wish to speak have had an opportunity to do so. If you do receive recognition, to make an additional comment, it must contain new information. My objective is always to move the procedures, proceedings along as fairly and efficiently as possible, and as my predecessor wisely counselled, once something's been said, everybody else doesn't have to repeat it. Because thorough presentations can actually shorten debate by answering potential questions before they're asked, I will allow up to five minutes for presenters who have filed a presentation request form with me. A timekeeper is seated in the front row this evening who will raise a red card, you can see it right here, when your allotted time to speak or present is up. I intend to be consistent and firm in observing time limits. I hope you will understand if I interrupt you when your time is up. Better yet, see the red card and stop yourself. All alternate main motions and amendments to a main motion must be submitted in writing to the town clerk, who has forms for that purpose. No more than two amendments can be on the floor at the same time, and a vote is first taken on the amendments and then on the main motion. Sometimes the main motion made by advisory is a negative motion, that is, a motion to take no action. A negative motion must be defeated before an affirmative motion can be put before town meeting. I will offer a fuller explanation when the situation arises. Our normal procedure is to use a voice vote on all motions. We will have a count of raised cards by the tellers if the vote is not clear to me, or if seven voters question the vote immediately after it has been declared. On motions requiring a two-thirds majority, we will try for a unanimous voice vote. If the voice vote is not unanimous but is clearly two-thirds, under Sherburne's bylaw, I may declare that the motion has been adopted by at least two-thirds of those voting. Again, if it is not clear to me, or if seven voters challenge the vote immediately after it was declared, we will have a count of cards by the tellers. On any motion, 50 voters may request that we vote by secret ballot. And last procedural point, I will read only the titles of articles printed in your advisory committee report and tightly summarize main motions when I repeat them. If at any time you would like to have the complete text of a motion restated, just ask. And I come to the paragraph where every year I discuss civility and courtesy at town meeting. I think this year, above all other years, given what's happening nationally and locally, I would appeal to the quotation of my favorite president, Abraham Lincoln. "I will appeal to the better angels of our nature to remember that we may agree and disagree tonight. We will go home, and tomorrow we will still be friends and neighbors." So let's begin with Article 1 of "The Warrant."
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Marl.
I move that the sum of $5,679.34 be transferred from free cash in the treasury for the purpose of paying bills from CM&amp;D to the Milis Police Department for details for roadwork of $416.56. CM&amp;D, MHQ Vehicle Repair, $1,937.78. CM&amp;D, Shady Tree Landscaping, Field and Lawn Mowing, $3,325.
I second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll proceed to the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. I forgot to tell you, but it worked out, that this requires by state statute a vote of nine-tenths. It's because it's an unpaid bill in a special town meeting, but it was unanimous, so we're in luck. Thank you. Article 2, third-party review of fire systems.
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
I move that the town move to amend its general bylaws by adding the following new Section 15 to Chapter 3. Section 15 Fire Chief, in addition to the fire chief's authority under the State Board of Fire Prevention Regulations, the fire chief or the fire chief's designee may require review by an independent third party with expertise in the matter of any proposed or completed work, plans, construction, applications, or other matters requiring fire protection, fire code, or fire department review. Such third-party review shall be at the applicant's expense. The fire chief or the fire chief's designee shall obtain from the third-party reviewer a proposal outlining the costs for the third-party review, and the costs as set forth in the third-party reviewer's proposal shall be paid by the applicant to the town in advance of the third-party reviewer performing the services. The fire chief shall make the final determination as to whether the proposed or completed work, plans, construction, applications, or other matters comply with fire protection, fire code, and fire department requirements.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. We, Acting Chief McPherson said that he is not making a formal presentation, but he is certainly available for questions if anyone has any questions or would like to make any points about this. If not, we'll proceed to the vote. This is a simple majority. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. I'd like to explain what's going to happen tonight. We have a slightly unusual but not unprecedented occurrence in that we have two special town meetings tonight. The first, which we have already opened and which we have dispatched Articles 1 and 2, still has Articles 3 and 4 to go. But we also have tonight, scheduled to begin at 7:30, a second town meeting, which has two related articles. I expect that there's going to be a presentation, there will be discussion, but I don't think it will go on too likely. I'm guessing it will be under 20 minutes. And we're going to take that up at 7:30. The reason we put one in the middle of the other is that each of these two town meetings, and this isn't, this is no strategic ploy, this is simply the way the information unfolded. The warrant for the special town meeting was closed before the information came forward about the time sensitivity of the solar panels in the second town meeting. And we have to have a quorum for both town meetings. So we did not want to put one at the end and the other forward for fear that we would lose our quorum. So we're doing it in the middle. Now, we can't, unfortunately, we've moved along a little more briskly than we thought we were going to. And unless you'd like to talk about something. We cannot begin consideration of the material that is the two articles that are in the second town meeting until 7:30, which gives us about 12 minutes to vamp as part of that. And I'll tell you the reason why I want to do that is Articles 3 and 4, I think, are going to have substantive discussion going on, and I do not want to stop in the middle of a substantive discussion to do something else, because the inclination when we return to it will be to start all over again. So I think it will be more efficient in the end if we don't do, if we don't begin Article 3. So, now we're down to 12 minutes. The town clerk is going to talk to us a little bit about early voting.
12 minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This will be more like two minutes, but I'll try and speak very slowly. First, I would like to bring to your attention that, again, for this election, the student directors from the Sherburne Community Center are doing a food drive to benefit a place to turn in Natick, which serves our area of Metro West. Last spring, for the presidential primary, they collected 1,000 pounds of food. So they're going for a ton for this election, and you may bring food when you come to early vote as well. So today, early vote started. We actually had 113 people early vote this morning, and it got a little wild and woolly for a few minutes, but it, everything went smoothly, and I, we learned a lot this morning. We learned a lot in the first hour. And so I think tomorrow will be even smoother, and as we move forward, now that we know a little bit more about what to expect, I think it'll be great. So, early voting takes place in Sherburne from 8:00 a.m. till 12:00 noon, Monday through Thursday this week and next week. Now, we're also going to be open Thursday night of this week. We're going to be open Saturday morning from 9:00 to noon, and I think that might be our heaviest turnout. And then we will also be open on the last possible day to early vote, which is Friday, November 4th. We'll be open that day from 9:00 to 12:00. So I hope you'll come. We're really encouraging people to give it a try. It's going to streamline the process on Election Day, I think, enormously, because people, people who vote absentee, which has been the only option up till now if you couldn't come on Election Day, those ballots must be processed through the polling place, just like a voter. And so, there's no advantage to that from an efficiency standpoint. But early voting ballots are cast through a separate machine, so they do not hold up the smooth flow in the polling place. So that's why you've gotten all this publicity, why there's a banner up in town, why Ed Wagner, Director of the CM&amp;D, has been kind enough to post his electronic board with early voting information out by the fire station. So, please, if you are so inclined, come and try early voting this year. I think it's going to be very interesting, and those ballots will be cast on Election Day, just like every other ballot. So, thank you.
A quorum of 100 being present. I call the second special town meeting. In pre-planning sessions, I refer to this as the "special special" town meeting, of 2016 to order. The first article is solar panels at the CM&amp;D garage.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Leahy.
I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen, 1, to enter into an agreement for the purchase of electricity and/or net metering credits generated by a solar photovoltaic facility to be installed on the roof of the CM&amp;D garage at 7 Butler Street, with such agreement to be for a term of up to 20 years, and on such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen deems in the best interest of the town. And, 2, to take all actions necessary or appropriate to administer and implement such agreement.
Is there a second?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Because this is not the same motion that you were mailed in your advisory committee report, I'm going to ask Jeff Waldron of the advisory committee to explain what has happened.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. As most people in town know, we had a public hearing, advisory public hearing, on October 5th, and we reviewed these two warrant articles at the time, and they're, Michael Lesser and his team have done a lot of work pulling this all together to create a solar initiative for the town that I think we all supported, but there were a lot of facts and details that weren't nailed down early enough and were still somewhat up in the air. So at the, at the time of our October 5th meeting, we voted to take no action on this warrant article. Now, you'll notice that the warrant articles are written very generally that give the selectmen permission to enter into an agreement, so it's, they're not necessarily contingent on a specific project, but tonight, Michael's going to give a presentation that provides the details, because we've made a lot of progress in the last two weeks on developing the details, or I should say, he's made a lot of progress. And so, as a consequence of that, the advisory committee had a posted public meeting this evening at 6:30, and we, based on new information that's available, we opted to support this recommendation now and to make a positive recommendation on Article 1. And in a minute, I think Mike will give the presentation, and I'll now read this. We're going to consider the two warrant articles together, so I'll now...
Should I read the second motion? Okay.
We're going to vote separately. I simply asked the two people that I knew were going to make presentations to do it at the same time. But we'll, we'll have you talk again after we've dispatched the first article and the second article, and Michael is going to make a single presentation about both articles. It's also been pointed out to me that I should have notified you when we began the second town meeting that, in fact, the warrant had been properly posted and the tellers sworn in. Michael, if you'd like to do your five minutes.
Does everybody hear me fine? Sound okay? No? Is this better? Okay. I'll get the hang of this. Hopefully that's not part of my five minutes. I'm Michael Lesser of the Energy Committee, 54 Forest Street. The project that is being presented here, what we're asking, I'm going to give the specifics of our project that'll be finalized with the Board of Selectmen and other people. Well, we, I could see you, but I'm not going to do it. I'm going to speak, because there's too many words on my presentations. If you want to see, you can see. That's an example of the panels on the CM&amp;D garage. They will be reconfigured so that they're further away from the edge, so that we don't have to worry about snow issues on the edge of the building. Basically, it's a project to do 100-kilowatt system on the building that will be owned, operated by a developer. We will be purchasing the power for 20 years from this project at a fixed price of 11 cents a kilowatt-hour, which is basically about, at this point, about 20 cents saving, 20 percent savings over what we're paying now for the power. That will increase over time, because this is a fixed-price contract that will have, that will not change, whereas power prices will be going up over the next 10 to 20 years, so that eventually you could be saving as much as 40 percent. It's not a large project. We're only talking about a bill now that's about $14,000. We'll save maybe close to $3,000 in the beginning. That could go up to five and more, to 10,000 towards, probably even $10,000 towards the end of 20 years, but that's a long way away. And the project has a lot of strong environmental benefits. It's part of the whole issue of dealing with reduced carbon emissions and dealing with climate change. Trying to speak a little fast, because I know last time I easily went over five minutes somewhere else. Okay, there we go. I'm learning this. So for people to realize, there's no expense to the town for this project, since we're just agreeing to buy the power. There are some initial issues that have to be worked out for this building in terms of, they'll be, once we sign a contract, there's an initial phase where they'll be doing engineering work on the building, as well as trying to get what's called an interconnection agreement with NSTAR, to make sure that we can move the power around, as well as that we could also move the power around to other buildings. During this period, and a tight schedule, because we are trying to get this done in time to get the financial incentives that are expiring soon, that we do have the option to pull the plug if things don't go well, or if we don't, or if there's any of the risks about the engineering of the building and other issues that arise, that the project could be stopped at a reduced cost. Those are some of the things that I'm just talking to. So that there, the risks to the town are relatively minimal in this initial development phase, right now, we're negotiating probably a maximum of $3,500 cost if something goes awry in the initial month or two of engineering and getting agreements with Eversource. But overall, it's a, it's a project that's with a company that's quite reputable, they've been doing a lot of projects. They will own the project. They have their skin in the game. It's there in terms of issues about the building's roof capabilities. Work has been already done about the fact that whether this weight of the system, let's say, is under three pounds per square foot. The building has a collateral extra load that they could put on of up to 10 pounds per square foot. This will all be worked out during an initial engineering phase. They don't want to put a project on a building that they will have to own, operate, and maintain for the next 20 years if there are any problems that would come up. It's on them to make sure this thing produces, they're even guaranteeing a minimum production level from this system. We have options to purchase things later if we want to do that there. But essentially, the, in terms of the building stuff, that'll be done, that we've already done initial work on the building issues, that look quite positive and working with in terms of issues of the building warranty and the clip system that the developer would use, so that doesn't void the warranty on the building. And the other issues of connecting with Eversource, the work and agreements with Eversource, we have the next month or so to work those all out before the project will proceed in any way. There is, the second, before I forget it, the second warrant, since I'm not going to be able to speak at the second part, the second warrant article is related to what's called a pilot, payments in lieu of taxes. This project is a little up in the air whether it has to pay real estate taxes, or pay, or some other kind of tax. The way the price is set up of 11 cents, that's based on no tax payments or any lease payments. We're actually leasing the roof to them for 20 years. There's no lease payments. If, this is a negotiated price through a group program, there's a power, there was a group program that was set up and competitively bid. That's, we're availing ourselves of a group sort of procurement process that was run through a buying group, so that it availed us of a price that we could, better than we could get on our own. We've had price quotes in the past for this project that were higher than this one. This is a good deal compared to what we've been presented with historically. This, but essentially, the 11-cent price presumed that there were no extra payments that would have to be made. If taxes have to be levied for some reason based on the Department of Revenue, we would have to make them good. Okay? But I just want to finish the second article. Therefore, in case we need to do any taxes or levy anything, we need the second warrant article as well. It'll be a no-cost issue in terms of whatever they have to pay us, we have to give them back. But that's why we need the second article, because the Department of Revenue might require something.
Thank you, Michael. Yes, Mr. Durensis.
The Board of Selectmen voted unanimously to support favorable action on this article. There is a deadline of January to take advantage of some special tax credits that makes this project economically feasible for the town. If we do not vote yes, then we lose the opportunity to take advantage of those tax credits. If we vote yes, you are doing no more than authorizing the Board of Selectmen to work on a contract that would have such terms and such conditions as the Board of Selectmen deems to be in the best interest of the town. We have an opportunity here to save money for all of us as taxpayers, to reduce the cost of our electrical service, and at the same time, to do what is right environmentally. Solar power is clean. It produces no toxic residue. It's virtually unlimited. It's renewable. It is the future. The time for solar is now, so we are asking you to give this opportunity in both Article 1 and Article 2. Give this opportunity for the town to take advantage of these present tax advantages to allow us to explore this further to meet the January deadline. We urge a favorable vote.
Yes, we'll begin debate. Robert, did you want to speak? Robert, did you want to speak?
Robert Johnson, 272 Western Avenue. I would like to ask the Advisory Committee of the nine members, how many voted for and how many voted against this new recommendation?
Yes, George?
The vote was eight to one to support it.
Is there someone else who would like to speak? Yes, there's someone in the rear. I'm sorry, the lights are so bright I can't see you other than your person.
William Ballyet, 172 A Forest Street. We switched to a company called Ambit Energy one year ago. They give a green energy, that's solar or wind, at nine cents per kilowatt hour.
Excuse me, can everyone hear him? Whoever is on the mic, I think there's some difficulty with the rear mic. Here comes someone to help.
Corey, ask him to give his name again.
Mic check, mic check.
Hello?
Hi, could you begin again with your name and address?
Yeah, Will Ballyet, that's 172 A Forest Street. We were spending 15 cents per kilowatt hour with Eversource. I switched us to Ambit Energy, and we have a fixed rate for one year at nine cents per kilowatt hour, or 7.5 cents for non, for regular power. But they guarantee, it's a green energy, they guarantee either solar or wind. And that's month to month, or you're going to get a fixed year for the year. So 11 cents is way above the norm. Right now, variable is 7.5, and with Ambit, they don't go any higher than nine cents on variable rate. So I highly recommend you look into that as they will give you a green energy certificate in writing, 100 percent, nine cents.
Yes, did I see there was someone in the front? Yes.
Good evening. Frank Hook, Town Line Road. I have just a couple of questions. What is the life expectancy of the solar panels? I believe that they're probably over 20 years. What happens at the time of, after that 20 years? What, what happens to the solar panels? Do we take ownership of them? Do they remove them? Do we get a benefit after the 20 years and does that benefit to us? Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
The panels, they have a life probably more than 20. At the end of 20 years, the way the contract works is that they will be decommissioned, they will take down the panels, or we can buy the whole setup for $8,000 roughly, which is probably going to be a good deal at the time. But, so, that's, that's the two options that we'll face towards that. And even towards the end, we can see whether there's reasons to purchase them even earlier. There's an early purchase option. As to the previous person's comment, it is an issue to go look into alternative sources of green energy that could be possibly lower cost. This is a fixed price over 20 years. It's a little tricky when you look at some of the other deals that you can get, as I've looked at myself as a homeowner, about how long those prices are. They're fixed for certain periods of time, but what they will be over the longer time is a little tricky. But in the end, it's, we talk, the difference of one penny is $1,000 a year, and the question is, is whether we're dealing with the fact that, whether those opportunities are available to a commercial municipal establishment, and this also defers our distribution costs, and I'm not sure whether, which gives us an extra few cents difference. So it's not an apple and orange comparison, given what we would be able to avoid, because we could avoid an extra four cents of a distribution cost with the way we do this program, as opposed to possibly using an alternative supplier that does green energy.
Thank you. Anyone here?
Yes. Rick Novak, 36 Nathan Hill Road. Mine is also just a question. Within the industry, one of the big items is, will these net metering credits last? And in places like Nevada, they're having very robust debates about whether or not you should still get 100 percent pass-through back. It sounds like the proposal in this structure is that the developer will take that risk, which is a wonderful thing. But can someone respond to, how is the structure built to protect against the developer's failure? Because a lot of these developers are probably going to fail in the next 10 years.
Michael?
Yes, that's an issue we've had already with developers who've come and made us proposals and faded before we even got, got to a point of signing something. Essentially, there are, there are decommissioning requirements that are there. There's been debates about decommissioning bonds and such like that in the contracts, which make it a little tricky. In the end, it's a, and whoever, if they go bankrupt, they will have financiers who will want that system to be operating, as part of the discussions we've had, that there's a strong motivation to keep the system going. The financial incentives that are in place, the one in particular that we're worried about, that will be expiring, is something that is a 10-year deal that's in place now that will be ending. And so that is fairly set in place in terms of what the main incentives are, and they'll be already taken advantage of in the first few years. So I think we're protected against, if the, if the company fails there, it's their assets, people are going to want to do something with it. It's a simple system to run. It's a simple system to also take off the roof. It's not an invasive system, they're just clips on the system, they're not even, they're not even piercing the roof. So I think, basically, in the work we've been doing, we feel fairly protected in the sense of, even in the case of a decommissioning issue, that we're covered that way.
Thank you. Sir in the front?
Joe Carte, 33 Woodland Street. The statement that the time for solar is now, there is wide deployment going on, but it's still a fairly new technology. And by that, I don't mean that it's unreliable or anything like that, but rather that it's still developing, and there may well be dramatic improvements in a five-to-10-year period. So these panels that we're worrying about, will they last 20 years? They could well be junk in three to five years, or five to 10 years. I don't know, but just a thought. Thank you.
Yes, in the rear.
Peter Lefebvre, Dopping Brook Road. I'm trying to recall from the introduction by the Advisory Committee, I seem to recall this is not a project-specific vote. Is that correct? I see Jeff nodding his head. And on that basis, I think this is an excellent move on the part of the town. I'm not sure about this specific project. As an engineer and other engineers I've spoken to, we look at that plan and see panels facing east and west.
Excuse me, Peter, I think you need to stand closer to the mic.
Okay, I'm sorry. I say, other engineers I've spoken to, and even my own, seeing this project is, insofar as the, insofar as the article is non-project-specific, I think it's a great article, I think we should do it, I think we should vote in favor of this. This specific project seems to still have a lot of questions with it, and I think we should certainly, and can certainly, trust the Selectmen to weave their way through that. But even on a preliminary basis, I know other engineers and myself have looked at this and see panels facing east and west instead of south and wonder, you know, isn't there a better location? So, again, I just speak in favor of the article. I think it should be passed. I think both of them should be passed. I think we should trust the diversity of experience and abilities on the Select, Board of Selectmen to do what's right for the town. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? If not, we'll proceed to the vote. The motion has been made and seconded. This requires a majority for passage, a simple majority. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Article Two, it, this involves this solar facility, payments in lieu of taxes.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Waldron?
I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to, one, enter into an agreement for payments in lieu of taxes pursuant to MGL C59 S38 HB, or any other enabling authority for personal property and/or real property taxes attributable to this solar photovoltaic facility to be installed on the roof of the CMD Garage at 7 Butler Street, with such agreement to be for a term of up to 20 years and on such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen deems to be in the best interest of the town. And, two, to take all necessary actions or appropriate administer and implement such an agreement.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Jeff, would you like to explain why there's a difference between this motion and what was published in your report?
This motion is a similar philosophy in that we felt that there wasn't enough information when we made our initial recommendation of no action, and so we also voted this evening to take positive action, recommending this warrant article.
And the vote was eight to one, the same as Article One?
Yeah, if you didn't hear that, the vote was eight to one for that vote on that second warrant article also.
Thank you. Mr. Durances?
The Board of Selectmen voted unanimously to support this article also. As the motion was read, I was struck, as a lawyer, by all the technicalities in the motion. There was references to statutes and sections. There are statutes to deal with how a municipality can obtain revenue from a solar facility like this. What this article is intended to do is to allow the Board of Selectmen the flexibility to take maximum advantage of the laws that exist so that we can get the benefit of this project. We urge a favorable vote on Article Two.
Thank you. Yes, in the rear.
Peter Lefebvre, again, Dopping Brook Road. Now I'm confused because...
Could you stand up to my...
I say Peter Lefebvre, Dopping Brook Road, again. Now I'm confused because Jeff explained that these articles were non-project-specific, and this article sounds like it's very project-specific. Can somebody give me some, enlighten me on that?
Jeff, or George?
Well, I think it, I was struck by that also, George, I mean, Peter, as I was reading it. I think it's still an agreement on, and it is specific to the CMD Garage, which is the only location, but it's not specific to this particular developer. So I think it is somewhat more specific than the first warrant article, but it's still general enough that it just, allowing the Selectmen the flexibility to accommodate if there are concerns about property tax issues associated with the solar panels on the roof of the garage. So while it's more specific than one, I think it's still general enough to allow, to apply to other projects. However, it does specifically mention that the CMD Garage, which is the only location that we're considering right now.
Then my question would go, is it, does the article, the way it's written, make it exclusive to the Highway Garage project?
Yes, both articles are specific to the CMD Garage. The first one as well specifically says that what we're, what these articles are doing are authorizing, we already voted on Article One, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to sign a contract of up to 20 years, and this allows them to have a contract where payment in lieu of taxes with any, it's not specific to any developer, but it is specific to the CMD Garage, just like Article One.
Well, again, Jeff's, Jeff's specific introduction was that this was nonspecific, and now you're telling me it is, and I think that's unfortunate. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Jaima.
Thank you. That helps. Thank you. We had a meeting with Advisory a couple of weeks ago to consider these articles, and at the time, we determined they really weren't ready to endorse, and so did Advisory. The reason was, there were just a lot of questions about the specific contract that was in play at this time. Since that time, Michael Lesser and Gino Carlucci, our town planner and others, David Williams, our town administrator, have done yeoman's work, particularly Michael, to try to get answers to a lot of these questions. I know he's had help and support from others on Advisory and other committees in town. And he's answered a lot of those questions, and we've seen those answers, but again, it's not to the point where we're ready to put our names on the contract today. And in fact, we might never put our names on this particular contract. If we want to take advantage of the timing for the tax credits, this would be the contract we'd have to sign, but the Selectmen won't vote to approve that unless they believe that's in the best interest of the town. If that doesn't, if that doesn't pan out, we're not going to sign this contract. But there is a, to answer Peter's question clearly, there is a specific contract that's in play at this time, but the article is general enough so that if this contract did not move forward, there would still be authority for the Selectmen to consider another contract at a later time with respect to the CMD Building.
Yes, did you want to speak down in front?
Artist Flavale, 32 Maple Michael. I'm wondering if any other buildings were, it seems to be that the issue is about the CMD Building and east and west and so on, have any other buildings been considered for this, for these solar panels to go on?
Excuse me, Mike, would you like to answer the question? Okay.
I will make an attempt. The question as to the orientation of the building is that, this is the third developer who's looked at the building. The orientations of the buildings are a factor, but this, this building clearly is a productive site for solar panels. We've had other estimates that are even higher than the current one that we're having with this developer. So that the east-west orientation does, is, clearly, it's possibly maybe 10 or 20 percent off from ideal if it was totally southerly facing, but it's clearly an attractive site for solar energy production. And it's, the risk is on them. They're guaranteeing 85 percent of it, and if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. That's, it's on them. We're not at risk on that thing. And, but they, again, we've had two previous developers that, one might question why they didn't go through with it, but they basically came up with higher assessments. As to other building, there are other buildings in town that could be done, it's just a quirk, the matter of smaller roofs, different shapes of roofs, but we will be looking at, part of the plan over the next year is to look at the schools and issues of when the roofs are ready for repair, whether you try to coordinate with those kind of roof replacement schedules, and whether you even accelerate a roof schedule if the, if the solar systems look particularly attractive. But so, other buildings would be looked at, other buildings have been looked at, and this is the most attractive one at the moment, and for this incentive that's in place now, we're trying to catch it. The future buildings will not be as attractive, although there'll be technological improvements, cost reductions, and the whatnot over the next years so that maybe there's less of a, that the incentives are less critical at that point. But I'm not sure in this case here that, right, we need to have the flexibility. I mean, as I understand it, from my view, the pilot, this warrant article is needed so that in case of addressing some issues from the Department of Revenue, we need to levy some sort of taxes or payment in lieu of taxes in order to go through with this contract. If that helps.
Yes, Paul?
There is a deadline. This is the only show in town right now, the only one that has a prospect of meeting the deadline. We obviously would like to see solar panels as every place we could, but right now, we've got a viable project, a viable developer, one who's willing to put money on this site. The question is, are we going to vote yes so that we can take advantage of this opportunity? Or are we going to say no, kill this opportunity, do nothing, let the tax benefits expire, and then have a situation where probably, we're going to have a hard time finding anybody willing to do anything here in Sherbrooke? Our position is, this is what's before us. This is our opportunity to do something with the CMD Garage. Please give us the authority to explore that and see if we can make it work.
I see no one else in line to speak, so we'll proceed to the vote. This is also a simple majority. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion passes. Is there anyone who would care to make a motion to dissolve the second special town meeting? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Okay. The second special town meeting is now dissolved, and we will return to the first town meeting. Excuse me, is there a question in the rear about something? Okay. We're going to return to Article Three. Okay. We're going to return to Article Three, which is the proposal to increase the size of the Board of Health from three to five members. Madam Moderator? Mrs. Wolf.
I move that the town vote pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 41, Section Two, to increase the number of members of the Board of Health from three to five.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I have a request for a presentation, which will be made at this time of five minutes.
I'm Erin Carroll from Russet Hill Road, and I'm here to present the citizen's petition to expand the Board of Health from three to five members. We initiated this petition because we feel that the Board of Health is not reflective of other town boards and committees, and open acknowledgement of the increased workload that the board has faced over the last 18 months. We feel it's critical to have a board that's efficient, productive, and prepared to face the unprecedented growth of our town. We would like more residents to participate, streamline where possible, and broaden the discussion and decisions beyond three people, which is the case with other town committees. The Board of Health is one of the most impactful and influential boards in our town. The work that they do and the decisions that they make affect every resident in Sherburne. But our Board of Health is uniquely small, with just three members. Other town boards and committees have more than three members, which allows for manageable workloads, ability to form working groups, diversity of thought, perspectives, and skills, and greater participation for more residents. We believe that the Board of Health performs a public service that is just as important as the work done by other town boards, which benefit from larger memberships. Across the Commonwealth, Sherburne stands out as one of the few towns that rely nearly 100 percent on private water and septic. Carlisle and Boxford also relied nearly 100 percent on private water and septic. Both of those towns have five-member Boards of Health. The rationale for a five-member Board of Health is not political. It's not pro or anti-growth, and it's not being sought as a way to ease regulations. We believe that there are inefficiencies with a three-member board that can be remedied with a larger membership. With a five-member board, two members can work together outside of a public meeting without deliberation and bring back their findings to the board, creating a more efficient and streamlined discussion. This will positively affect workflow, and the workload can be shared among five rather than three members. Just taking a snapshot of the months that the Fields of Sherburne were actively discussed in April 2015 to April 2016, the Board of Health held 20 regularly scheduled bimonthly meetings. However, during that same time period, the Board also held 15 special Board of Health meetings, with the longest meeting running nearly six and a half hours. That's a 75 percent increase in meetings and approximately 45 hours of additional discussion. Often these meetings run well into the late evening or early morning hours, which has been acknowledged by the chairperson, and I quote, "It's no surprise to anyone that the Board of Health has been having late meetings often for over a year, but we have a lot of work." We have seen other boards take advantage of working groups, including the Board of Selectmen, who successfully expanded from three to five members in 2014. In addition, we believe that a board with a larger membership will also allow for less influence from a single point of view. We would like to see a board that's welcoming of diverse experience, skill sets, and skill sets, inclusive, not exclusive, while all focused on protecting the health of Sherburne residents. The Board of Health is very busy, and there's likely not a slowdown in sight. Beyond the ongoing review of routine applications, the Board has started to address and revise current regulations. This is a time-consuming process, and one that has already been through three public hearings, lasting over eight hours without a single vote. Again, a working group could have streamlined this process. The Board is also responsible for ongoing governance and administrative changes. This includes a review of past procedures, writing and implementing new procedures, ongoing correspondence with the Inspector General, and the hiring of a new agent. And then factor in all of the growth that our town is facing. The time spent on the fields is just a representation of what is to come. We should have more members on the Board to work on these projects, address our regulations and changes that need to be made in a timely manner, transparently define and implement governance procedures, and streamline workflow through working groups. We want what's best for Sherburne. We are raising our families here and enjoy all that the town has to offer. We are voting yes on Article Three because we want our Board of Health to be reflective of other town boards that benefit from larger membership, broader perspectives and skill sets, greater resident participation, and productive and efficient meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. I will say that at the Advisory Committee hearing, there were 18 different people who wanted to speak on this article, and I anticipate that we may have similar input this evening. So I would ask that you only speak one time, and before you speak, if you would like to consider carefully what you want to say and to be as succinct and clear as possible. I also would remind everyone that we want to remain friends and neighbors. And, yes, I'm sure. And that any comments that are personal in nature, or that speculate about one's motives are always out of order. So if you could avoid any comments of that ilk. Is there anyone who would like to speak now on this article? Actually, if you do want to speak, if you could just line up at the assorted mics, that would be helpful.
My name is Michael Newman.
Excuse me. Could you wait to be recognized, please? I actually was going to start in the back, which, in the rear, could you, I believe you have to speak quite closely into the mic.
Warren Wheelwright, 137 Hunting Lane. I see we don't have a lot of speakers. I want to thank everybody for coming. This is an important vote. It's your water, and if you were to, belying the purpose given here, if you were going to log on to Nextdoor and be part of that social network, you would see a raging discussion about the underlying purpose of the expansion to-
Excuse me, Mr. Wheelwright, I believe I had just made a remark about ascribing motives. Would you please like to recast what you'd like to say?
I'm sorry, the, the network has had quite a discussion on this subject of this article, and I would say from it, and from discussions I've heard come through network of people, that there is going to be an effort to lessen the regs, and one of the things that hasn't been said is that we have a jewel of farm pond that's highly dependent on substantial good high regs that will protect it. Phosphorus is killing ponds on the Cape. Title Five is not a direction for Sherburne. Thank you.
Yes, in the front.
My name is Michael Newman, 16 Nason Hill Lane. I've not been a participant in the discussions before this, and I noticed one comment that I wanted to broaden from the discussion we heard a few minutes ago. The three-member board creates a conflict with the public meeting law. Anytime two of those people are even in the same room, there are considerations of whether that is a public meeting of the Board of Health. I think it's a very wise and important thing to do, to expand the board beyond that, so two people could actually be in the same place without constituting a public meeting conflict.
Is there someone in line in the rear?
Hello, my name is Gina Capillion. I live at Nine Parks Drive in Sherburne. I would encourage a no vote for the expansion of the Board of Health, and my reasoning is as follows. Other than the fact that I'm vertically challenged.
And if you could step close to the mic, too.
Oh, sure. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. My reasoning is especially poignant because I was part of the group who worked on the Fields of Sherburne, and sat through many of those meetings with the Board of Health. And the area of concern that I have personally is that we are seeming to use this as some way to reduce the amount of time spent or make this more efficient. In the case of the Fields of Sherburne, would I have loved to have had some time back? Yes, absolutely. It was a long night, many nights, with the Board of He- Health, excuse me. But the Board gave due consideration at that time to the developers' positions as well as the positions of the citizens, and so did the Zoning Board of Appeals. And with 40Bs in particular, there are a tremendous number of complexities that have to be heard. I don't see that expansion of the Board to add an additional two seats will achieve anything with regard to that objective of making it more efficient. The process itself, with the Fields of Sherburne, was a very time-consuming process merely because we didn't know how to deal with things overall as effectively. We had only had one other 40B in town that had been discussed with such vigor. I think it's wonderful that so many people are energized around the conversation. The Board of Health, however, serves multiple ways, not just 40B regulations. I think it's really important for us to remember that the Board of Health has also been very thoughtful about the fact that-
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Would you like to wrap it up? Finish your sentence?
Absolutely. The Board of Health has been very thoughtful about all positions, and they've worked as hard as possible, from what I sat through and witnessed, to be very considerate and efficient as possible. Thank you.
Is there someone in the front, and then we'll go to the rear?
George Morgan, 41 Bear Hill Road. As much as Article Three advocates greater efficiency, increases in participation, and broader discussion, and diversity of perspective in support of increasing the number of numbers of the Board of Health from three to five, none of the voices so raised actually provide any substantive reasoning or actual evidence that relates specifically to just how any of these points would actually support and maintain public health standards in Sherburne. As you consider your vote on this article ask, does this article call for any particular qualifications for any additional members on the Board of Health? It does not. Does this article call for any particular agenda relating to public health? It does not. Does this article actually identify any credible area in which the three-member Board of Health is not currently carrying out its mandate by the state to oversee public health standards for the benefit of all Sherburne residents? It does not. Has the present three-member Board requested that its numbers be increased? It has not. Has the nature of the broader discussion and diversity of perspective voiced most often recently as desirable in support of maintaining existing standards? It has not. Does Article Three and its call for broader discussion and diversity of perspective identify the professional experience and backgrounds in public health of the present three-member Board of Health as desirable and beneficial to Sherburne? It does not. Most cities and towns, Board of Health in Massachusetts, have three members regardless of the town's size, and this has not been a constraint on quorums or a problem for meeting, open meeting laws. The present three-member Board of Health qualified as it presently is has demonstrated that it is indeed serving the larger public health interests of all Sherburne residents by supporting the standards that now allow us to make the strongest possible case to the state for necessary protections, particularly to Sherburne, of our soil and water against stresses of new development. A no vote retains the three-member Board and is a vote to maintain the standards now in place.
Thank you, George. Is there anyone else in the rear that would like to speak? Excuse me, sir, are you, okay, you're walking toward the mic, okay?
I was asking if you wanted to go first. I'm Doug Kingsley, 138 Farm Road and 144 Farm Road. I have a vested interest in this. As, I'm, I think I may be the highest taxpayer payer on the pond. So I want clean water, but I want the board expanded. I think the board that we've got is running inefficiently. I've been to many meetings over the last 10 years. I've been unimpressed with the, the board that we have. I think we need fresh blood and more expertise on the board. I think if you have a, if you have a single instance where the public meeting law is violated by two people even talking to each other, it's, it is incredibly inefficient. By having a larger board, you can have multiple meetings and subcommittee meetings of this board, and I just think it's going to operate more efficiently. So I would vote for yes on this, on this article. Thank you.
Is there someone in front who would like to speak? Michael?
Michael Lesser, 54 Forest Street. Being on another regulatory board, the issue of when you start having task force or other committees, just note that those are other meetings that have to be posted and meetings as well that have to be there. So there's some, this, well, for task force, maybe you could find the linguistic changes, but a subcommittee, for example, has to be as we experienced on another committee. And then I worry about the issue of whether, how you get that dialogue. The process of changing regulations, as I've gone through in other committees, is a hard, difficult issue, and people fight over words, and it's important to have that in a public arena where you get input and not have product that's produced, and then it goes, you're going to end up having the same kind of review when it comes to a regular meeting. And so when we experienced trying to do subcommittees, again, you just have to have and then another posted meeting so that people can come. So some of the efficiency issues might be there, but it's still an issue of making sure that it's a, that you really do get the public dialogue, because it is hard to make these changes, and people, as I sat through wondering about whether people wanted to know whether they could shovel their snow in a driveway. You can't believe the number of issues that have come up in other regulatory changes that I've gone through on another committee. So that there are issues there with that idea of task force and subcommittees.
Is there someone else in the rear?
May I ask you a question, Madam Moderator?
Yes.
My question is, has the Board of Health taken a position, an official position on this article, and if so, what is it?
Is Darrell Beardsley here? Ah, she's waving. Would you like to step to the mic and answer the question? Darrell is the chairperson of the Board of Health.
Yes, Darrell Beardsley, and the Board has not taken an official position on this. However, I do have personal comments to make based on my experience afterwards. Thank you.
In the rear, the next person?
Rebecca Honeywell, Board of Health. But I'm speaking for myself. I am not overworked.
I, oh, excuse me, could you give us your address, please?
Rebecca Honeywell, 104 Woodland Street.
Thank you.
I'm also on the Board of Health. I am not overworked, and I feel that most of the work the Board does is actually at the Board meetings in a public forum, which is beneficial for the Board and the town to represent the town's needs. And I, it's unclear to me why the authors of Article Three, most of whom have lived in Sherburne for less than three years, are so dissatisfied with our work.
Excuse me, please be careful.
I'm just saying that I don't understand the concerns, because what matters more is who is on the Board, not how many. And it is true that we have unprecedented work due to some projects in the pipeline. However, perhaps really the concern should be, why does our Board of Health have such a small budget and only a very part-time- a small budget and only a very part-time agent, which is 12 to 14 hours a week? Clearly, that would improve access to administrative support and the things which would fall into the category of customer service. I recommend that that be examined in the future. The work of the Board, we are working effi- effectively because not one member of the Board has any conflicts of interest and we've never had, not had a quorum, which has happened in the past when individuals had to refuse themselves from elections. So we are fully representing the needs of the town with individual expertise combined. I personally think that the number of the Board is less important than who is on the Board and I do not support this article personally.
Thank you. In the front, yes?
Colleen Hadfield, Russet Hill Road. On behalf of myself and my co-petitioners, I wanted to let you know that we started this journey as an attempt to propose an improvement to the Town Board. We're not doing this to suggest that the current Board is somehow lacking effort, are not trying their very best to serve the needs of our town. They're volunteers to whom we're sincerely thankful and appreciative, as we are to all Town volunteers. Most people recognize that the needs of the town are shifting and we want Sherburne to be proactive and prepared for the changes ahead. We believe a five-member is likely to be more effective than a three-member Board and will allow us to prepare for the future. My husband and I moved our family to Sherburne with our four children for the amazing schools, the space and the quaint, small-town feel. I personally became involved in this project because I felt it was important to be proactive in helping prepare our town for the large amount of work the Board of Health faces, including the significant amount of 40B projects on the docket that are frankly quite unsettling. We want to raise our children here and help preserve all Sherburne has to offer. Hopefully, our work on Article III will strengthen the Board's capacity and efficiency and ensure a strong future for Sherburne. Please vote yes for Article III, thereby putting Sherburne in the best possible position to protect our town's health, future and ability to meet the changes and challenges ahead.
In the rear?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm Catherine Sturgis, 38 Hunting Lane. I've had the privilege to serve on many committees here in town and most recently as Chairman of the Governance Study Committee Task Force. And when we started our mission, our journey, and it's a word that's being used quite a bit this evening, which is great, we had no intentions of looking at the number of members of the Board of Selectmen. But in our discussions as we move forward, talking about Town Administrator, Financial Director, we, this kept coming forward to us and we did propose an article to increase the Board of Selectmen from three to five. And I think this has been a very good thing for the town of Sherburne. And yes, it en, it allows the members to talk to, to a subject and we have seen this work very well with the Board of Selectmen, with the General Chemical Studies. And I, I encourage you to vote yes on this article. I think it is a good thing for Sherburne. Thank you.
Darrell?
So Darrell Beardsley, 54 Forest Street. And there, there could be any number of reasons why you would want to change the number on the Board of Health. However, I just want to point out a few things. It was discussed about workflow and workload and the Board works together on all those issues for all the projects that come before it. And so increasing the number of Board members is not going to change the amount of time that any Board member needs to spend at meetings and to be engaged in all of those topics to be able to vote on them appropriately. The 40B project that came before us and as pointed out, was very demanding on our time. Again, everyone would have been sitting there and listening to that. I don't think it was inefficient. There was mention about the Board being inclusive of different points of view and different ideas. We did that to the best of our ability throughout by having public comment and also allowing the project applicant to revise and revise and revise and present new material throughout. And that's what made it long. Also, 40Bs will not go on forever, so that won't always be an issue and there has been discussion about having special support to the town for 40Bs. The issue of having people speak on the side, I can't say for sure whether that would change any of the workload or workflow dynamics. However, it's still going to be important for any two people who are off talking on the side to come back and report fully to the rest of the Board. So in terms of a time savings, I'm not so sure that that is an issue. And then I think most of my other points have been raised by others. So thank you.
Is there anyone else in the rear that would like to speak?
Yes. Neil Kessler, 43 Page Farm Road. Just a couple of comments. I sat through many Board meetings about the Fields of Sherburne, so I got a chance to watch a lot of Boards and Commission and that Conservation Commission in action. So the one thing I wanted to say about the Board of Health was that, or what I think the central question before the town tonight is that, is whether or not, or what's the best way to be protective of public health? And the one thing I'll say about the existing Board of Health is I've never seen them do anything other than put that at the forefront. There have been a lot of discussion and questions about whether or not the Board's efficient, whether it's up to date in its regulations and the rest of that stuff. And depending on who you put on the Board of Health, if you increase to five numbers, that may be increased or decreased. But the one thing that I think everybody should be asking themselves is, if you're adding two new members, are you going to be improving or, yeah, are you going to be improving upon the Board's ability to protect public health? Again, it depends on who you put on the Board, but I don't think there's something inherent in increasing the number of Board members that says that you're better or worse off in terms of protecting public health. And again, the existing Board of Health has done nothing but put that at the forefront and do an excellent job. Thank you.
There's no one else in the front. Is there anyone in the rear that would like to speak?
Suzie Wheelwright, 137 Hunting Lane. I hear a lot about efficiency and I hear less about protection. I want to give a real shout-out to this Board of three members who are well-qualified and who have done an excellent job of protecting us in dangerous and, and unknown, somewhat unknown waters by using their skills. And I, you know, I don't hear any of them saying that they're overworked, that they're inefficient. They are thorough and they should be thorough. They should be protective. Our, our most important asset is our water. And I, I have to say that I am absolutely in favor of maintaining this three-man Board. I think that this whole situation is pretty odd in the way that it came about, that we're here at a special town meeting when we'd all rather be doing something else.
Excuse me, Suzie, please be careful.
Frankly, that it is a solution in search of a project, of a, of a problem rather than a problem that we need to solve. So I would ask all of you to vote no on this article and to devote yourselves to helping support this Board, whether it's you, the Selectmen, you, the Advisory Committee, you younger people with your good ideas who can go to any open meeting of the Board and state those ideas and have them listened to and considered instead of being a solution in search of a problem. Thank you very much. Please vote no on this article.
There's someone in the rear wants to speak. Yes?
Hi, Susan Tyler, 26 Weston Avenue. I would like to say, please support this article. Please support the increase from three to five. I was involved a couple of years ago when we did the very same thing with the Board of Selectmen. And yes, then we had a special meeting that was called to do this. And the reason for doing it then with the Board of Selectmen was to increase the number of people and perspectives that were brought forward. It also allowed more work to be done because two members can discuss an issue, do the research outside of an open meeting and then bring it all forward to the table so there's discussion to be had. That is, it was not political then and the reason for the increase now from the Selectmen, from, from the Board of Health, from three to five, is still also, again, not political. And I've heard people say that the pond is, it's, you know, don't do this because of the pond, don't do it because of the soil, don't do it because of the water. That's the reason to do it. Let's get five people, five perspectives, five peoples working on the problems and the issues before this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Neil? Yes?
Neil McPherson, Great Rock Road. I'd like to start by thanking proponents for bringing this forward because I think it's important that we look at our government and look for ways to change our government for the better.
Yeah, you need to speak closely into the mic.
All right, again, just want to say thank you to the proponents for bringing this forward as I believe we need more people willing to bring new ideas to the town of Sherburne that challenge the conventional thinking. And I'm also disappointed here that people are trying to take a personal snipe at the people bringing this forward. Having said that, when it comes to the Board of, the Board of Selectmen, we've seen in the past, we had three members and we expanded it to five members. I think that that has been a very positive change and we heard many of the same things during that conversation that we're hearing tonight about reason not to change it. So if history is any indication, I do think this is a positive change. Diversity of experience, as we've all known in our, in our business lives and personal lives, diversity of experience is important and I think there's great value in bringing different viewpoints to the Board of Health. When it comes to efficiency, it's simple math. You can do more with five people than you can do with three. Meetings, having been on a bunch of different committees, I can tell you again, having more people is helpful, all right? And when you have two people or three people on a committee, it is much harder to conduct business and have conversations because of the open meeting law. So I would just say, I think this is an opportunity to change for the better. I hope people will vote in favor of this motion.
The people who are standing in the rear, could you raise your hand if you're, if you're waiting to talk? Okay, we have two people waiting to talk. We'll take those two comments and then perhaps we can proceed to a vote. Yes?
Peter Lefter, I, I may not have been paying close attention.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Dopping Brook Road, may not have been paying attention, but could we hear what the vote was from Advisory and the Selectmen, if they did vote on this?
We voted to support this article eight to zero.
And the Selectmen?
We voted to support it three to zero. I do have some comments, Madam Moderator, if I may make those.
Yes, I'll, I'll go to Mike and then it turns out we did have someone in the front and then we'll go to the, the person who's standing in the rear.
Thank you. We, we voted three to nothing to support this article. You may note, it was three to nothing despite a five-member Board. That's because two of the Board members simply couldn't make it to the Advisory hearing date. But we still were able to have a meeting. We still were able to do Board of Selectmen action with a three-person Board. That's one of the advantages of the larger Board, the five-person Board. I, I wanted to thank Darrell and the rest of the Board of Health. They do a lot of work. And I know from being in the same position a few years ago, there's a temptation to take it as a personal criticism if the town is asking to increase the size of a Board you're on. I hope you won't take it that way. I've certainly seen the advantages on this Board of the larger Board and I was not a proponent the entire time that was being proposed. I'll also say my own personal observation of the Board of Health's workload is that they are overwhelmed. There's an extraordinary amount of work that they're doing and it doesn't all get done in meetings. Darrell does a lot of administrative work outside the meetings. I know I'm copied on some of those emails. Dave Williams, our Town Administrator, works with her on public records requests and any other number of items that don't deal directly with particular development projects. A larger Board would allow sharing the workload. I think it would be more efficient. It's been a criticism of the process for a long time that it's, it's a lengthy process to get through the Board of Health. I think that's not the Board of Health's fault. I agree with the comment that was made earlier that says we need to budget properly for the Board of Health, but we also need to budget time properly for the Board of Health and I think you can do that by adding two more members.
Okay, Lanny?
Lanny Rubin, 26 Elliott Street. I would only say that the Board of Health has an excellent history. I asked Carol Mapple how long it had existed in this form. She wasn't sure, at least 50 years, probably more. It has done an excellent job of protecting this town and what we are considering here is actually taking a risk of decreasing the vigilance of the Board of Health to give the kind of quality of protection that we've had up till now. I would urge you to vote against this increase.
Artis, if you want to speak and then I'll go to the back and that'll be the end of the comments. Artis, do you want to talk? Darrell, you've already spoken. I ask that people only speak once tonight. Artis, go ahead.
I, Artis Lefter, 32 Maple Street. I'm a little confused about the efficiency question inasmuch as where, you know, research can be done outside of a meeting. I think it's been stated a couple of times that in order to be, to have all information public, it has to be presented publicly and discussed publicly at the meeting. So I don't really see that the meetings themselves are going to be less frequent or less lengthy. We do have a lot ahead of us in Sherburne and I think that there's also where there may have been complaints that it's, takes a long time for things to get through. I think that's because we have particular needs for our town with well and septic and we do have stringent requirements here. So again, I don't see that a five-person Board is going to affect that really at all with respect to, I understand that you're saying what your experience is, Michael, and I appreciate that, but our Board has done a good job. It's going to continue to do a good job. And I worry about the efficiency, the expertise of the Board being watered down by including, by expanding it to five and including two extra members. I, I wonder about the requirements of who those extra members would be and whether or not then we have to consider defining what the expertise of those people is, which introduces the whole next question. So I support the three-person Board and I urge you to vote as such. Thank you.
In the rear?
Tom Fryer, 42 Parks Drive. In thinking about what I might say to my fellow citizens and neighbors, I participated in many of the hours regarding the Fields of Sherburne and didn't know the Board of Health prior to that experience. They are outstanding people. We've got three people that really understand the science around protecting our water. What I saw was a developer who brought experts multiple times, I would use the term duplicitous in presenting information. We went through hearing about a new technology that would take close to 800,000 gallons of sewage treated into the groundwater and a butter, and I'm not a butter, but my fellow neighbors who were sitting there were well-served and everybody in this town was well-served by the three people on that Board. If we could have two more just like the three, I might even support going to five, but I'm going to stick with three for now.
Yes, Carol?
And this will be the, the last comment.
I'm Carol McGary. I live at 262 Weston Avenue and I am a member of Conservation Commission, so I'm familiar with what it's like to be on a regulatory Board. Board of Health deals with scientific and medical issues, issues impacting public health. We are very lucky currently to have two doctors and an environmental engineer on the Board. If we expand the Board to five, I am concerned that it will be very challenging to find five Board members who have the skills and expertise necessary to be effective in the face of the challenges we have today with 40Bs, with more dense development, with threats to our groundwater. As Rebecca pointed out, if you want to add to the bandwidth of the Board of Health, expand the hours of the Health Agent, which are something like 12 hours a week. I urge you to vote no on this initiative.
Okay. Yes, do you have something new to add?
I do. I promise.
You know where I live, if I don't.
Okay, let's hear the new, let's see. Is that Adam?
It is. Adam Page.
I have to recognize this guy. I'm his next-door neighbor.
You're going to figure into this new information, too. Adam Page, 3 Peckham Hill Road.
Adam Page.
He just said.
Yeah.
So I, first of all, I support this. I think we should expand the board. I do have, you know, there's a lot of talk about how excellent the board is, and I don't refute that. I'm sure that they're very intelligent, very capable people. I did have an experience where my neighbor was putting in a septic system, and just because of my own curiosity, I said, "That new septic system looks quite close to my well, which happens to be somewhat near the road." I guess it's grandfathered in. If I hadn't brought this forward, the septic system would have ended up within the scope, within the boundary that it should have been in. And so when I brought that to the board, I was a little bit concerned that maybe, I don't know, if there's more people who are able to do that kind of work to look at where are the wells, you know, that maybe that would help avoid that sort of circumstance in the future. I'm just glad I looked into it. So I'm not questioning the board. I'm sure that they're excellent people. I don't understand the argument that if you have more work coming, more people won't help get it done. If you have 50 hours of research, I can't imagine it takes 50 hours to report that back to the board. Maybe it's a five-minute summary that helps the board move forward, or maybe it's work to help the board make the case for a better health agent, one that's full-time. And there's other skill sets besides science that are important for the town: project management, meeting management, efficiency, looking at customer service. So I trust the town's ability to find and vote for excellent people on this board, and I don't think we should let the fear of who these two people might be scare us. Those three people on the board right now, they might move. Are we saying that we couldn't find someone to replace them?
Thank you. We'll proceed to the vote now, and if I could please, I'm sorry, Darrell, but you've already answered one question. Excuse me, I, she's already answered a question, and she already had the opportunity to speak. I think we've been more than fair. I ask the same of everyone. We're going to proceed to the vote. I have been asked by several people about having a secret ballot, and I would, if you could, everybody was given a yellow card. If you could just show me with a show of yellow cards, 50 people, if you hold up your cards, we'll have a secret ballot. I think we're going to have a secret ballot. We had 365 people present. We had 345 ballots cast, and we had yes, 190, no, 155. The motion passes. We'll move on to Article Four. This is a second. If you are leaving, please do so respectfully of the people who are remaining and we're still conducting business. Article Four is to establish qualifications to serve on the Sherburne Board of Health.
Oh, Madam Moderator?
Ms. Relus.
I move that no action be taken.
I second.
She moved that no.
I move that no action be taken.
Is there a second?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded that no action be taken. This is one of those negative motions, and when it comes up time to vote, I will review this with you before we do vote. There is a presentation that's going to be made on behalf of the petitioner.
In the back, could you kill the lights? Thank you.
My name is George Morgan, 41 Bear Hill Road. I am the petitioner of record for Article Four, establishing qualifications to serve on the Sherburne Board of Health. This article establishes the requirement for minimum credentials on the Board of Health. This article as presented does not define the minimum credentials or the process. A motion to amend Article Four will address these additional concerns. We urge voters to vote here against the advisory committee's motion of no action in favor of positive action. A yes vote permits the motion to be amended. Why do we need qualifications now? We face critical and complex public health issues in Sherburne shared by only two other towns in eastern Massachusetts. These issues require a higher level of professional experience, which we have now on the three-member Board of Health. The Board of Health must understand our current water and septic standards, must understand the science supporting these standards or any new ones, and must understand the laws and regulations supporting Sherburne's water and septic standards. The Board of Health expertise supports the town. These understandings allow the present Board of Health to quickly grasp scientific data and arguments, to most effectively negotiate to protect groundwater in face of contamination or dense development, i.e. general's chemical and 40B projects, to effectively protect a butter's rights, and to better address a wider range of town healthcare needs. Volunteer board members with broad understanding of health issues can best provide critical Article to establish minimum credentials to serve on the Board of Health, the town of Sherburne will establish minimum credentials for serving members of Sherburne's Board of Health. Board members will be experienced credentials, health professionals, or environmental scientists equipped to interpret scientific data and analysis. Credentialing better fulfills health board mandates, making decisions that will be in the interest of the public health for the benefit of Sherburne residents and Sherburne's natural resources and the community as a whole. Questions we've heard. Is it democratic? Yes, we are voting now pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 268A, Section 17 and 23. Is it legal? Yes. It has precedence in multiple states and towns in the United States. Boards of Health in Massachusetts are mandated to set their own standards. Is it ethical? Yes. Is there a conflict of interest? No. The town, including Board of Health members, may establish minimum credentials pursuant to Massachusetts law per the Massachusetts Ethics Commission under Mass. General, Chapter 111 and 268, and under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 268A, Section 17 and 23. The Mass. Association of Health Boards is on public record as encouraging scientific and health backgrounds for local boards of health, including the ones that we will propose. Sherburne is different, one of only four towns in densely developed northeast region and inside 495 relying entirely on private wells and private septic. Approximately 20% of the town is open water, 20% is wetlands, vulnerable to contamination. No mandated well testing to alert homeowners of contamination. Therefore, we have stricter standards than the minimum standards of the state. The impact of Article Four. A yes vote. The town will establish a requirement for minimum credentials on Board of Health that will encourage and maintain the most experienced and backgrounds in public health that volunteers can provide. The definition of the minimum credentials and the process will be established legally. And next, the town will decide the definition and process to accomplish this goal pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws and the democratic process. Thank you.
Before we go to comments, and I hope if you do want to speak, that you're getting yourself organized to line up, and I would say once again that at the hearing, there were 13 different people who wanted to speak. I anticipate we may have a number of people this evening, and so I'm going to ask you only to speak once and to think carefully about what you're going to say and to be clear and succinct. I just wanted to clarify the language that was in the presentation. This is not an amendable, the word amendment was used, but in fact, because it is a motion to take no action, the option open to you is if you support the option to take no action, which means that you oppose the citizen's position, you vote yes. If you are in support of the citizen's petition, you would vote no against the negative motion. And if the negative motion should fail, then the petitioner has the option of making a positive main motion. It's not an amendment. It would be a separate main motion. So we'll go over that one more time before we take the vote. So we can begin with people who want to speak. Is there anyone in the back? There's no one lined up. Is there anyone in the front?
Colleen Hatfield, Rust Hill Road. Let me begin by stating what I think we all believe. We want a Board of Health that includes members that are knowledgeable, experienced, and that will act in the best interests of our town. The question is not whether candidates for the Board of Health should be qualified to serve, but rather who should make that determination. Historically, Sherburne has allowed the community to make that decision, and we've been well-served as a result. This proposal suggests that as a community, we are no longer able to determine that appropriate qualifications for the board, which is a position I do not agree with. The petition cites the legal obligations for the Board of Health, specifically that under Mass. Law, Board of Health are responsible for both state and local regulations for disease prevention and control, health and environmental protection, and for promoting the healthy community. Like virtually all laws, though, it doesn't prescribe exactly how Boards of Health should effect this mandate, nor does it state who is qualified to do so. It leaves that decision to the individuals in each community. And reasonable minds can disagree regarding who is best equipped to serve on a Board of Health. For instance, depending upon the circumstances, I believe that an effective Board of Health requires individuals with diverse set of backgrounds, be it experience in public health, medicine, environmental science, law, and perhaps even business. You may disagree with me on these qualifications, which is okay. What's not okay is that this petition allows others to dictate those qualifications to the citizens of Sherburne. I also note that this petition raises a number of questions. Why is it being proposed now? Who's deciding which candidates are qualified and on what basis? How are we preventing conflicts of interest? I think that over time, the petition, if it becomes effective, creates more issues than proposes to solve. We're a small town with passionate group of residents interested in helping Sherburne. As everyone knows, there is another petition to expand the Board of Health. This petition seeks to expand the community's participation or governance. The current petition is diametrically opposed to that concept. We can reasonably disagree regarding the evolving needs of this town and what those needs require from the Board of Health. However, at least, at the very least, I think we should all be able to consider any candidate that is willing to run for the board. Thanks.
Yes, there's someone in the rear?
It's Artis Flavell, 32 Maple Street, again. I would like to ask, how does the language, should this, now I'm confused as to how to say the no and yes vote, but should we consider this change? How does the language, how is the language determined as to what the qualifications are? Could someone answer that?
Could you restate the question?
So it was just, in what was just said, it was stated that we would have, we need to have control over what these qualifications are. We want to have a say in that as a town, which I don't think anybody would disagree with. But, so there is, this proposal doesn't include language, defined language at this point. How does that language then become defined?
Okay, George, would you like to answer that question?
Yes, this would be the main subject of the additional motion here. Part of that motion would include an answer to that question. Is it appropriate to give that answer now, or?
Sure.
Okay. Basically, the question is who can run? And while we recommend that this range of qualifications, which are shared by the present Board of Health members and are recommended by the Massachusetts Association of Health Boards, generally as being desirable across the state for health boards anywhere in the state, the question still remains, what happens if someone actually wants to run for the Board of Health who does not actually have these particular qualifications? The answer to that that we would propose would be that anyone can run. Anyone can run, subject to completing a Mass. General Laws, Chapter 268, Section 23B disclosure statement two months prior to the election. This is basically a statement of, that you have no conflict of interest. So we open it to everyone. We encourage everyone who is going to be running for the Board of Health to bring credentials of the sort we offer, because we know that this town and its position does need to have the very best minds to interpret these very complex issues and proposals and such that are brought to the town. It's not an easy thing for just any layman to work through. So while we encourage the best minds in the town, burst in public health, to run, to volunteer for the public health seats, we do not deny that anyone can run, so long as they actually comply with the Massachusetts General Laws disclosure statement, that in so running, they do not actually come to the election with a conflict of interest as it relates specifically to what they do and what public health does in Sherburne.
Thank you, George. Is there someone else in the back that would like to speak?
Rebecca Honeywell, 104 Woodland Street.
Rebecca, be sure you speak directly into, close into the mic.
This matter was raised to the Massachusetts State Ethics Commission. However, the response was not received until Friday. So the information that I have, or that we, that the authors of this have, was not presented to the advisory board or the selectmen prior to this meeting, and it would, will be contained in a motion if this is over, if the advisory board vote is overturned. What we're voting on now is whether the town would like to establish or approves of the concept of establishing minimal credentials. A motion will be made if a majority is interested in doing that, which will go into some of those details and include the recommendations of the Mass. State Ethics Commission, who feel that the proposal, as now written, would not exclude, not be unethical, or propose any conflicts of interest. This was intended to strengthen the Board of Health by taking advantage of the skills that people bring. There is no desire to exclude anyone, and in the absence of those backgrounds and credentials that were included in the original article, if those are not present, anyone can run for the position of an open seat on the Board of Health. It would simply require, because it's a special act, it requires a 23B disclosure pursuant to Mass. General Laws prior to that election, so that if an election takes place, there isn't then a isn't then a conflict when they do that routine procedure at the time.
Thank you, Rebecca. Yes, we'll take Frank, and then we'll go to the selectmen.
Frank Haas, 64 South Main Street. And I support the advisory motion for no action on this article. Right now, the people who pick the Board of Health is you, and you have two MDs and environmental scientists. And I'm sure we can add two more people that might be similarly qualified. And when I saw that at the hearing, they had all these scientific things, which are good, but they don't have to be doctors, and they don't have to be environmental scientists. A good, a chemist might be a good person on there with this general chemical thing. Perhaps someone who is a professional administrator might help it run better. Perhaps someone who's a lawyer might help interpret all of the laws. So I think that we can do well by picking a variety of people and still have a strong board, you still want a scientific base. And I do agree that there are some things so complex that no one on the board is going to know, so the suggestion that we increase their ability to get outside consulting be approved in some way so that if they need specialized, the information, they can get it. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The Board of Selectmen voted three to zero to support the advisory motion and oppose the article. And I want to also point out, the proponent has just raised that there would be a motion, if the advisory article was voted down, there would be a motion to amend the article to create a state ethics requirement and, I'm not understanding, but apparently not include the scientific data, professional environmental scientist language in here. We can always pass a, or propose and pass a bylaw that would put a state ethics commission requirement on the Board of Health or any other board, but that's not what this article says. This article is proposed as an article that requires specific credentials for the Board of Health itself.
In the rear?
Joel Foner, 49 Whitney Street. I have a background in engineering, but not water science or any of the related public health areas. Just want to bring up a couple points. This is a different kind of problem than some of the other problems other town committees handle. Yeah, I'm going to draw an analogy that some people may say isn't fair. The engineering team behind the Challenger knew it would blow up. And a bunch of other folks said, "It'll be okay." This is the kind of thing that I'd like to not see happen in this town. Because some of the issues we're dealing with are really subtle, long-term problems that you don't know for 10 or 20 years until we've had something floating around that's causing an adverse health effect. So, I mean, I think having some minimum of experience and background to be able to interpret what experts, quote unquote, "experts" are saying is not in any way out of line. I was present at some of the Board of Health meetings about the large development near Whitney. Yeah, I'm not an environmental sciences expert, but I listened to what they had to say and said, "Yeah, there's a huge hole in the logic behind what you're saying proves your point." If you don't have some of the right background to be able to look at these arguments and listen to them and say, "Do they really hold together?", then you're making those decisions on a motion, and frankly, I'd rather not have my health and the future of my health decided by that. Thank you.
Yes, Carol?
Carol McGarry, 262 Western. To give you an analogy, I'm on Conservation Commission, and new commission members are vetted to make sure they bring relevant skills to the Board. I was previously on Historical Commission. Again, in that case, I didn't have as strict skills, you know, as relevant skills because it was not a regulatory board. So in the case of Conservation Commission, everybody on the Board has some kind of relevant skills that relate to wetlands regulation, laws, or agriculture. This measure would provide a similar level of expertise or, you know, expectations for Board of Health members. And as the previous gentleman said, this Board is regulatory, which means that health matters come before it all the time. They evaluate each matter based on the relevant regulations and science, and then they make rulings. I think, I've heard, seen a lot of comments on Nextdoor about how we need people who are management-oriented or administratively-oriented. The Board of Health has an administrator. There is no need for management skills on the Board of Health. The Board of Health also has broad responsibilities in public health and areas such as immunizations, education about contagious diseases. It is a very, very broad mandate, all of it environmentally, scientifically, or medically related. So, one of my concerns and the reason I'm supporting this is that I do think there is always the possibility that there is a candidate who most people think, "That sounds good what that person's talking about," but in fact, they're not in a position to make an informed scientific decision, and then they essentially end up being a drag on the Board because they're not contributing to a process that needs to be very informed. So that's why I think that this is a good rule, and I also don't think that it's unusual given the fact that other Boards choose people with expertise.
In the rear?
Hi, Gina Capillion, Nine Parks Drive. I just wanted to say that now that we've opened up two additional positions for the Board of Health, I think it's incredibly important that we give really significant consideration to who occupies those seats. And I personally, as a voter here, prefer someone who has the credentials and the qualifications to make judgments on concerns over and above development issues, such as epidemics and how to handle public health issues that are significant and affect our whole town. So that is why I support the idea of having people who have credentials to make those decisions and who can use the tools that they've established over their career to do that. Thank you.
Yes, could all the people in the rear who want to speak, could you just raise your hands so I get a handle? Okay. Yes?
Hi, Susan Tyler, 26 Western Avenue. I just want to say I do not support this, and I hope the rest of the...
Susan, you need to stand closer to the mic.
Oh, usually you can hear me. Susan Tyler, 26 Western Avenue. I want to say that I do not support this article, and I hope that others here also will not support it. This is a reactionary article that was written. This is because it was the one that just passed for increasing the Board of Selectmen, Board of Health from three to five, and then all of a sudden, this one came up. This is not...
We're not speculating on motives.
Well, that's my speculation, I'm sorry. It's not necessary. This is going to require, my understanding is a special act of the legislature to approve this. For goodness sakes, we've got a presidential election going on right now that people don't have to be qualified for that position either. So, this is, this is not necessary. Thank you.
Yes, there in the rear?
Hi, George Honeywell, 104 Woodland Street. And I amazingly come out in exactly the opposite. We, this is necessary, and our presidential election shows us why, right? We want qualified people. We, as a community, want qualified teachers teaching our kids. We want qualified, you know, firefighters protecting us in event of emergency. And we want people to make sure our water's safe. We all drink the water. The bubbler's right here in the school. We want to make sure the water's safe. So we want the qualified people who can do that for us.
Yes, did you want to speak? You're up.
Good evening, Tim Tapley, 17 Great Rock Road. If you want people who are qualified, if you want people who are going to make the right decisions, informed decisions, be involved, come here, listen to what they have to say, don't put the power in the hands of someone else. I knew a great man once named General David Brahms. He was an incredible litigator, and he used to stand before a jury and he would say, "Ladies and gentlemen, if you want to know the truth, you pick up all the facts, you pick up all the evidence, you hold it up underneath your nose, and you take a big whiff. If something stinks, it's just not right. This stinks."
Excuse me. If no one else wishes to speak, we will... Uh-oh, okay, sorry.
I'm Bill Ferguson, 262 Western Avenue, and I just have a procedural recommendation. It seems to me that there's a kind of, I'm not sure what we would be voting on if this motion to not vote on it was defeated, and I'd like to hear that. So I would recommend that we all just vote no on this, and then we will hear what we actually might get to vote yes or no on, and we can vote yes or no on that. So just to straighten things out, I think we should vote no on this, and then have a real question that's clearly defined on the floor, and we can vote intelligently on that. So I recommend a no vote on this strange procedural process that would block us from actually voting or talking about what it is that we might really vote on. Thank you.
If, is there anyone else who wants to speak? Okay, we're going... Okay. I was about to do that. Before we do that, I'm going to ask the same question again. If you would like to have a secret ballot, could you please hold your yellow card up? I actually don't think we have 50 cards, so I think we're going to be doing a voice vote. We'll start with a voice vote and see if that's clear to me. And I'll explain what the difference is between yes or no. The motion that is on the floor right now is the motion from the advisory committee that says we should take no action. Take no action means that we would not do what the petitioner has asked to have happen. So that if what the petitioner has asked for, and you can only judge that basically by what is printed in your report, I hope you read what was in your report, and you read the text of the petition, and what you heard from Mr. Morgan's presentation. If you are opposed to having that happen, then you would vote yes in support of the advisory committee's motion. A yes vote means that there would be no qualificat, extra qualifications to run for the Board of Health. If, however, you are in support of the petitioner, that yes, indeed, there should be qualifications to run for the Board of Health, then you would vote to defeat the motion from the advisory committee. So you would vote no. You oppose the motion to take no action. Has everybody got the difference? Okay. So we're going to start off with a voice vote, and actually, the acoustics in this room are pretty good, and you can scream your head off, and I'll filter you out. I'm looking for mass noise. So all those in favor of the motion to take no action on the petitioner's petition, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion passes. Okay, we now, we've completed all of our business for both of our town meetings. Do I have a motion to dissolve the first special town meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor? Those opposed? Thank you. See you in the spring.